And then all right.
Good luck.
Call the meeting to order at six thirty. Please stand and join me for the flight of weekends.
Yeah.
Are there any revisions to the agenda? Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Reviewed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The special event tonight is the office for our newly elected, reelected board members. So Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, this is exciting. At this time, we get to officially swear in reelected Jane and Paul. So thank you so much for your interest in supporting the district in the way you already you have and ongoing. So please join me.
You have to stand.
Yeah. Yeah, what you just, I think this is best. What do you think, Russ? All right. Please repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi.
Oliver. You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
That will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Washington School District, number one, one, two, dash, six.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Washington School District, number one, 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 two, dash, six.
Director, district, and state, which district?
Director, district, two.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Yes. What do you think? Applause or anything?
Actually, on the agenda is our student reps. Thank you for being here. Again, go over to Aaron.
Yes. Great. Thank you. Hi, Olivia. Okay, so we did receive a notice earlier today that one of our student reps was not going to be able to make it due to the weather. So she is not here. I think she shared with Jacob some information that she wanted to share. So I had asked the students to give a little bit of an update on AI. We had met with Mr. Brown last week and Mr. Castle to discuss kind of a project regarding AI for this year with our student reps. And I also asked them to share specifically each one of them, something connected to something they did last week, or in Jacob's case, his position with the city as the City of Washington student rep. So Marley, can you start us off?
Sure. So last week, ASB, a small group of the ASB students went to the regional Jostens Renaissance Renaissance Conference. And Jostens, if you don't know what it is, it's like a framework and Washington is a Jostens school and it strives to promote student and staff relationships and having everyone at school want to be at school and enjoy it. So Mark Brown was the speaker there and his main topic was to be a hope dealer, which is to kind of lead by action, deal, hope, and to just always strive and not get stuck in the hard spots. And we had they also showed ideas that other schools, other Jostens schools in the nation have done to build climate and culture in their schools and some that kind of stood out to us that we might try and incorporate at Washington is a standout photo board. So it would be in the hallway somewhere on the wall and it'd be a big sign that says stand out and then we'd have disposable cameras and ASB students or anyone, any cool events that are going on at the school can, someone can take the camera and take a photo and then put it up on the wall. So students can feel recognized and can like go look and see their picture on the wall and be happy. And then also custodian plaques, because I feel like custodians are often kind of overlooked in the recognition process. So custodian plaque would be like a photo of the custodian on the wall and it'd say, this hallway is cared for by whoever the custodian is and kind of get them a sense of belonging and make sure that we recognize everyone, not just students and teachers. Yeah.
Thank you. And I'm going to talk later on during my few minutes about that specifically because I was there and I got to see our students firsthand interacting with other students and adults as well as the keynote. It was very inspiring morning for me. Thank you. Jacob.
Um, I'll start with my stuff, I guess. So as the city council student rep, I've had eight meetings now, I believe. And they've all been really educational, really helpful. Really, I kind of wanted to highlight the three main things that I think that I really get out of it. And the first one is connection. I really, I really like to talk with people. I like to meet new people. And I mean, I've gotten to meet an exponentially greater amount of people this school year because of that. Not only is it community leaders, the people on the city council, but it's also whoever comes in to speak during our workshops, that the a local community leader from like Vancouver campus, you know, something like that, or even if it's just someone who works in the back office that you don't necessarily see, but they're an integral part of making Washington run. I think that that's really great. And then the second thing is opportunities. I've gotten all kinds of cool stuff out of it. I've gotten to go to award ceremonies like they did one for the people that did Citizens Academy, which is a program where they teach people generally that are adults kind of how to be more involved in Washington. And the goal of that is to get more people onto committees and maybe even interested in running for city council. But along with that, I've also gotten to personally read proclamations and awards out for people at the meetings. And I think that's something that's really cool and really powerful, especially when we're recognizing people like we did the last one. The Helens who got recognized for their years of being like Mr. and Mrs. Claus at holiday stuff. And I think that it's just really cool to recognize people like that. And I'm really proud that I got to do that. And then the last thing is just getting kind of a new perspective on stuff. Obviously, I think that I have my own opinions on a lot of the stuff that we talk about, but really getting to like sit there and listen to everyone's perspective and the community's input during that time of the meeting is really impactful to me, especially such a young person. You know, I think that a lot of young people might be more close minded than they probably should. And so I think that that's also just amazing. I think that as the city council student representative, I get a better opportunity than most, maybe even adults, to really open my mind to more ideas, perspectives, something in our community. And I think it's really powerful. Um, and then I have Jocelyn's stuff for the ambassador program. So I'll just read that off for you. They got, they are set to receive the thousand stars award, award. I do not know what that is, but it's for their team to drive receipt the program. So that is teaching kids safe, healthy driving habits. And kind of like, it's a lot of like getting students involved kind of in their own education of like what is safe and healthy when you're driving. And so they'll be receiving that on Friday. And then on Thursday, they're going to Ridgefield to do a presentation on policy and the role that youth play in their communities when it comes to making and passing laws. So that's just a good opportunity for local activism. I got to be part of that presentation last year. They'll speak with local or I guess not really local, but they'll speak with our representatives. So Kevin Waters, David Stevie, and Senator Paul Harris. So they'll speak with them because they usually attend that event and they'll get like some hands on stuff there. And then above beyond that, they do their own small little presentation where they speak with the students that are in attendance about what's why it's so important and how you can be more active. Um, they'll be having their meeting at the end of this month to create their program of work for the next year. So that means that probably by the next school board meeting, they'll have a lot better idea for what they're doing for all of next year and that it was super exciting to hear. And then their aid kids, which are like little kids, they get out the students who might struggle with that are almost done and they'll be made and sent out in the upcoming months. So that's also very exciting news. And that's all that she gave me to share.
Your commitment with the city in that position, is it two years?
Um, no. So I'm, I'm, I got sworn in on August twenty eighth. And so it's the meeting before next August. It's the first meeting next August. But generally what they told me was unless if I don't want to do it anymore, or I just do a horrible job, then I get to do it again next year. So I'll probably do it a few years. Yeah.
Got you. Okay. Right. Thank you. Olivia.
Hi.
How are you? Okay, don't worry about it.
How am I?
Yeah.
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Um, you asked me to do something or to ask to talk about any updates for United.
Right.
I haven't been to, I think it was the last United meeting, but I went to the one before.
Okay.
There's not really much update you with. There was some volunteering opportunities that passed. So there's not much going on.
Okay. Was the last event, their drug take back happened in the fall?
I think so. That or the refuel. I don't know what it was called, but it was something with refuel.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, so now can you summarize the meeting with Mr. Brown and Mr. Castle for the board, like what we discussed and kind of what the ideas for this year?
Yeah.
Um, sure. So we were looking at an example policy for AI and like how we should promote it and restrict it in the, in the school. And I think most of it we thought was really fair and was a good balance between like, like we, we have to accept that this is like a changing, a changing world. AI is progressing and it's it's happening whether we like it or not. So we should be teaching students how to use it properly because it's going to be a part of their life in the future. And it was a good balance between like learning and supporting AI, but also restricting it. So we're still doing all of our own learning. And then do you want to talk about the like the blurriness before the, between?
Yeah, sure. So on there, there was kind of two papers that we got, two examples. And so in one of them, it was essentially like three levels. And so the first one was, I believe, AI recommended. And in that stage, it would be where the teachers actively like telling you that you should try to use AI to finish an assignment or something like that. So in that case, it'd probably be an assignment where part of your grade is your ability to actually use AI efficiently and effectively in order to finish like the project that you're working on. And then the second tier, I remember quickly, was AI approved or something like that. And that one is kind of like, you can use AI, but nothing that I should see should be AI, right? So that'd be like creating like a source list or something for yourself and then doing your own research off of that source list. And then the last one was AI restricted, which means that you shouldn't use AI. There should be nothing in your project that is AI. Pretty much it should be all your own work. And so kind of the key thing that I thought was kind of blurry between the two on was between AI recommended and AI allowed was that if I were to say, if my teacher's having you write an essay and I say, yeah, I wrote my essay, I used AI to create a source list, then I'm within the rules. But what if I used AI for more than that? I just don't tell them. Well, necessarily, how would they know that? Especially if it were to be, you know, an assignment that maybe I'm I'm just doing it to make my life easier and not just say I'm doing it because I don't know the subject material, right? And so there was kind of that blurry line there. And then with that too, is it's kind of like, is there is there a need to have the multiple levels kind of written out? Or maybe is it just you can use AI and here are the barriers in which you're allowed to use it on this assignment, or you can't use AI, in which case you can kind of just have the two. Um, and then the second handout we got was a little bit more specific. I don't really remember it as well. Oh, here we go. Um, but pretty much what it is, is it's, it's five stages and it goes from no AI, all personal work to your entire assignment, I believe is what it says basically should be AI. Um, to where it's basically a assignment like that, you're being graded off of your ability to use it. And so I think that one of the curriculums, the first one I talked about, or not the curriculum, like guidelines is more to enhance the student's ability of knowing how to use AI and to more directly tell them when they should use it. Whereas the second one, I feel like would be more so used in a sense to where we're creating actual courses to teach you how to actually utilize the AI. That's how I personally perceived it. But we had a very great conversation about it and we kind of also came to the conclusion that for the first one at least, that maybe having the distinction is good just because some students might see the lack of distinction and kind of just be like, well, you know, I'll just do whatever I want. So that's pretty much my takeaway from our meeting.
Great. Olivia, anything you want to add? Okay. Last. Anything you want to add to what they just shared and kind of the, the plan?
So what we were starting with was a WADA model of a form that goes on to learn policy to 2023, since existing policy and then just basically create that framework for students to know what the expectations are in any given assignment and then to create like a model code of, and that they've probably even become part of our student families. So that the foundation was that, and we talked about things like discipline. If students are operating outside of their parameters for assignments, our goal, our goal was to have the students help commit to the model language. And then to gather teacher feedback as well along the way and to have them come back and teacher working probably later this spring with whatever we think is the right approach for Washington and then have them present that to the board.
Thoughts?
I have a question.
Yes.
Marley, Jacob, Olivia. Why are we talking about AI?
Because students are using it in school currently. And I think that there needs to be a guideline that like, like a base, base rules that should be followed at all times.
Plus, we also think you're going to be using it after you get out of school, right? So I think, yeah, it's here. So we need to be educating you, right? This is what it's all about. Jacob's very good about like pre-public education, but that's why we're trying to come up with guidelines on it. And like, we want your opinion and the teacher's opinion. Everyone is thinking on it. Like how you safely use it, but then also be proficient at it because your first jobs, it's going to be there.
Also, I could be, I was going to save this for the comment session, but we're talking about AI. I think it's, it's a big experiment on society. Neuropsychologists and neuropsychiatrists are studying what using AI at your age or younger, what that does to the development of your mind and your, your ability to think independently and stuff. It's just a big experiment and like they were having some guidelines so that it's not just crazy experiment, but I agree totally with Paul. It is here. You're going to be using it. Almost everyone's using it. Teachers are using it. The way that you're evaluated on your work or your learning is going to be changing. Because they might think just submitting a written document is no longer going to necessarily reflect you and your understanding of the material, your ability to express things. And it's here, it's changing, just like social media. You guys are beginning to fix on that figure here. So very interesting.
I'm curious, when you talk, sorry guys, long term, when you guys were talking through the levels, did you discuss when it would be fully restricted and what your thoughts were on like when that makes sense?
Um, we didn't really go super into it on like, what, what exactly it would be that it would be fully restricted. But I mean, to my, my assumption would be that most teachers would be like, if it's a, if it's a AO where I'm not specifically part of your grade is your ability to use it, you can't use it at all. That'd be my assumption because once you open that door, it can get kind of, kind of hard to be able to gauge just how much they used it. And I might kind of hard then if you're trying to give a repercussion for whatever they did, right?
Can you help the board with an AO?
Oh, like what an AO is. AO is an assessment objective. So that's what we call pretty much all of our tests. And so for us, I believe that they're worth ninety-five percent of our grade. And so if we get like a set of bellows and then you have to do seventy-five percent or more of those. And then you'll take the test. And if you had seventy-five percent or more, then you can, then you can retake the test. But if you didn't do like any of them, for example, then you can't retake and pretty much whatever grade you got on that test is going to drastically affect your grade if you're not careful. And so that's, that's kind of how our grading system is set up in high school.
Awesome. I'll share with you. I shared with, with Mr. Hanson. As a former professor, professors are figuring out how to evaluate whether material, whether work product is the students or AI and pretty clever strategies some professors have to seed the information in a way that AI will generate one output, a human brain will generate another output. It's interesting times, very interesting times.
Thank you for sharing your takeaways from our meeting last week. We have plans to meet in the future and continue this is less shared kind of what we're thinking. And then at some point in the spring, sharing some information with you. We'll keep you updated along the way. Okay. So now whatever you want to share, is there anything else you want to share about what's going on?
Um, I, I think that just to kind of go along with the AI that we already talked about. I think that it's really important that the district really looks into, especially you guys, looks into like what you're actually going to be voting on. Because I think that it's very important that we have the guidelines. I think that I very much agree with pretty much everyone up there that it's going to be very important and it's very much here and we have to adapt to it. And so, you know, I think that maybe if you, if you don't necessarily think that you fully understand like what you're going to be voting on, maybe just research it because I think that it's very important.
Great.
Does the district have a AI platform that we provide for students or is everyone on their own?
So right now, I think students can access with their Chromebooks, ChatGPT. And then how about Gemini? No. So in ChatGPT, there might be some others that they have access to. We've been discussing like what would be one of it because we're, as a Google School District and we're using Gemini as administrative team.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that might be, we were talking about for our students that are working on this, can we give them access to something other than what they have that's, that's available, so other than chat? And again, there's a host of others.
Yeah. I guess that's one of my concerns is there are very sophisticated large language models that go way beyond chat or Gemini. And if you happen to grow in a kind of two engineer family with the resources to purchase some of the, some of the software, you have an advantage over, over everyone. And I think, you know, thinking forward, having a platform everyone uses, everyone becomes comfortable with makes sense to me.
Yeah, Paul and I attended the same session at the WADA conference from Quincy and that's where this forum, they are using this forum that, that we shared with our students from WADA and this is what they've used as their policy. And they talked about that, the equity, like what about students who don't have access at home? And so to be very thoughtful and intentional with, with that. So as we have similar concerns with our students. Anything else? Anything else you want to share with the board? Are you looking forward to winter break? Yeah.
Can share that?
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's going to be a while. So yeah. I was so, I was in elementary school today and they said, yeah, there's been some, we see some different behaviors right after Thanksgiving and approaching winter break. So kids are excited.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Nope. Okay. Thanks so much. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. So right before, should we get to the next presentation? I did want to mention, and I failed to mention, so I was so excited to get change to Paul with the oath that, so Sadie isn't here. So we will go through the same process with Sadie at the next board meeting. And then what we typically would do at this meeting is, is make a decision on president
Organization.
And vice president. So yeah, and organizing those positions. So that'll happen the second board meeting in January, which is January twenty seventh. Okay?
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a, a report on the resource optimization work group.
Yes. Yep. So I have a presentation that I want to pull up. So just give me a second. Okay. So we have had two meetings with our resource optimization work room. And those meetings take place in, in the boardroom here. And we, we've invited a number of individuals, but it's also a meeting that anyone can attend. And later on, I have the upcoming meetings for this. Jane was able to make the last meeting. I think Paul is planning to be at the next meeting. And so two meetings, we've had some individuals attend both meetings. And then, then I, I chose a day that there's a lot of stuff going on. Festival of Trees, we were, people were decorating the trees. There was the parade downtown, the tree lighting. So a number of conflicts on that day. So I, I am optimistic that at the next meeting, we will have a number of individuals because I, I feel like there's a fair amount of interest and people are prioritizing these meetings and they're going to continue to be supportive. So this first slide is really the slide that I shared with the work group on the first meeting and then brought up the, the second meeting that the, the big issue is, is declining enrollment. So that's, that's, that's what we're analyzing is the declining enrollment. And you see in the graph what our enrollment has done over those years. It's about a eighteen percent decline. And so that is challenging in itself. And so what we've done to mitigate that is we've impacted our programs with, with reducing staffing, in some cases eliminating programs. And so we're kind of in this cycle and we've been in this cycle for a few years with having to adjust to our enrollment. And that's impacting what is our, our, our planning for support for our students. So in, in seeing this and, and hoping that this group can have a, help us with identifying some potential proposals for the board that we can present later on this year that might help us in, and again, mitigating the impacts that we're seeing. It's quite possible. I have pulled up just a minute here. I pulled up the wrong presentation. So I'm going to stop really quick. That was our first row meeting. And so that's not the one I want to show you. So just give me a second. The awkward silence. I wish we had a little music or something that would help. There we go. Okay. So this was our, our last meeting. These are individuals who attended the meeting. These are the three groups that I'll speak to in a few minutes. So, so we have three groups that we have taken those and that were participating and asked them which groups they wanted to be in. And so these are the three groups that we're going to, I'm going to speak to. And then you see the dates. So we have our next meeting is January twenty second, then March nineteenth, April twenty third, and May twenty first for those meetings. This is that same graphic that I started with and then the purpose. So here is the purpose for this group. We've invited staff members, community members, and again, anyone can attend this meeting and we're hoping to get is, is different perspectives on the resources that we have. And what can we do with those resources? Not only on next year, on the next five years, possibly the next ten, maybe fifteen years. And again, the guiding question is how do we best use the resources that are available to us? So one of the takeaways from the first meeting that we had, we spent a lot of time at that first meeting talking about the problem with declining enrollment, talking about the impact with declining enrollment and how we need to adjust because what was happening with our, our overall budget. And, and what was happening, as we, there's a little bit of context to the last few years with our, our fund balance. And so from that, what some of the takeaways from the first meeting was when talking And so from that, um what some of the takeaways from uh the first meeting was when talking about the levy, because we went over. Majority of the meeting was talking about the upcoming levy and we'd already shared with the board in October uh some facts about uh the rate. And what would then potentially be the resolution is that this is a renewal. So that was pointed out by the committee members. This is a renewal on 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 program, programs that are already being contributed to by the E P N O. And then the improvement on our on our uh facilities by the capital. Uh, this is about twenty percent of our overall budget. Um, that what the results of the E P N O is helping us with our class sizes, which we heard through our strategic planning. That uh lower class sizes are preferred by our families and then that this investment by the community stays in the community. Which that wasn't necessarily something that we had been talking about as far as the E P N O with the capital. But it's so true with with this investment that it stays in Washougal. So we talked about, as I mentioned, uh for the the committee. Uh, the work group on the first meeting was just making sure that they had an understanding about the, in this case, the the levies and bonds information. So uh in this last meeting, we went over our our budgeting uh enrollment patterns in twenty-four, twenty-five. What we're think uh what's happening right now in twenty-five, twenty-six. So as we're looking at all of the data that we have, the resources that we have. That we want the individuals participating to have a base level of information. As we're getting into the the smaller groups and then what are the recommend recommendations going to be? So this was just some context to the upcoming E P N O and capital levies. So now we get to what happened the the last half of our last board meeting is we divided up into three groups. So one of the groups is the is future program needs. And how do those align with our strategic plan, long-range capital investment planning? And so we're talking about the next five, ten, fifteen, even twenty years. If you could imagine planning twenty years out, we're looking at like what what kind of um property are we gonna need? What kind of investments in our current properties, our current facilities and then s- school consolidation. With declining enrollment and what we're seeing in all of our buildings over the last twelve years. Would say we're we're seeing this some sort of a decline. And some in some building, it's 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 greater than others. So it isn't necessarily we're seeing a decline consistently for each school. But in some schools, it's a greater decline than others. And so uh that's the third group. And that happened to be the largest group, but when we asked staff that there the those participating to choose. Uh, that was the the most individuals in in that group, so individuals might switch uh in our next meeting. Uh, it's up to them. We have the Q R code for anyone who's interested in identifying which group they want to be in. Questions, wonders regarding the the meetings that have happened so far or future meetings?
Do you have enough in each group?
You know, that's a good question. And so because they were probably, I would say twenty-five to thirty percent of the um. Individuals weren't there that were at the other meeting, although we had new members at this meeting. Um, and I don't know what what they're interested in which groups, so that that's kind of challenging. Uh, I think we certainly had enough in each group to have conversation. And really with the the big ask on uh last week's meeting was, what's the information you believe we need for the January twenty-second meeting? And so from that, we have a list of items that we will collect now and we will have these in a in a area where they can have access to them. And really, once we start the next meeting, we're going to be focused in these groups on that information that we uh we've gathered. And so that is the the team is going to be working on that uh in the next couple of weeks uh leading up to that meeting. So I'm gonna say yes, uh do we have enough? Uh, just because we had enough people to have the conversation, but so it also expressed interest in choosing to go to a different group. Uh, based on just kind of, I think, seeing what was happening in that group and what they were, the discussion was about. And really, that was for this individual, that's kind of where their experience has been, which is what I'm really excited about is with the individuals that are that are. Um, joining and the conversations we're having and what their experience has been. We have a number of educators, but we also have a number of community members who have been architects and in different facets that 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 I currently don't have that level of expertise and experience. Any other wonders? Jane, you want to share your experience?
Uh, kind of to your point, there was such a good mix of people with different experience and getting a lot of perspective. Definitely good conversations. I think just speaking from a small group that I was in, there were so many different. Um, thoughts and avenues explored that hadn't even been talked about previously, so I'm really excited to see the level of interest. And the willingness to donate time and energy when we're all busy. I think it just continues to speak to our community and how invested they are in this industry.
Thank you.
I'll give you my triennial rant on levies and uh I think this group could be very. Uh, helpful and involved in convincing our legislators to fulfill their constitutional duties of fully funding K twelve education and not. Requiring all two hundred districts to go back to the voters every three years, asking for twenty percent of their budget, so. I think educating that group in this context, you know. I think legislators here from the board member or from the school district administrator. They see that as a as a vested interest in funding. We're hearing from other members of the community that are not directly. Involved in some.
Right, and I could see where now the timing for January twenty-second isn't good if we were to invite legislative representatives or our local representatives, I believe, would be interested. After this upcoming session to join us. I mean, we have a we have a couple of meetings that that might work. And then we also, I my my goal is that this is a a work group that continues to meet after this year. And so with a with a similar uh schedule, so I think it's it's manageable. Uh, it's ninety minutes that we meet. There is no ask to do homework, uh but there are a number of people who are very interested in in having more conversation about this.
Awesome.
Great, thanks, Jane.
Uh, anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Okay, um proposals for action. Uh. There are no citizen comments specific to the action items below, so we'll go right to it. First is the appointment of pro con committee members for the renewal level, levies, E P N O and capital.
Right, yeah, so a state law requires district to advertise for patrons and we have, we have done that on our website. Uh, and these are for statements that will go into the the voter pamphlet. Um, so as I mentioned, we we have posted uh on our website, uh we're seeking applications for the uh from district residents. Interested in being appointed to the committees for to write the for and against statements uh for both Clark and Community County. And so at this point, uh other than, you know, the if if there's interested. Members, they can reach out uh to Corey uh with that, which we've had some individuals that are interested in that. Uh, for the for the for the.
Is there a deadline on that for community members?
Well, so the decision is going to be made. Corey, we have it, it passed, so that was the date.
Okay.
December third.
So. We need to get, am I correct, we need to get.
We we do.
Visuals writing something.
Yes.
Before the ballot.
Yeah.
Two people.
Good.
For the crowd.
None for no.
Yes, yes, we have two that have, yeah.
Yeah, so that the board's action is still playing. And then those three people on top of the side on one of them to be that person that's supposed to be in the other. If that's my understanding of it, then it'll be.
Okay.
We're doing action and we have two individuals who have expressed interest in the pro.
And a motion to appoint those two individuals to the pro position. I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
I.
I opposed. Thank you, community members for.
And then at this point, if if there's a if there's a a need to continue to to search. Um, we will we'll verify with the with the counties. And I'll update you on that.
Yeah. I mean, as we talked about this morning or sometime today, there must be a deadline when the ballots go to the printing office or the ballot information stuff and. I think it sounds like we're doing everything we can to.
Right.
Find people.
At this point, yes, I would say that we, yes, we have, we have advertised and there has just not been someone expressed interest in the con.
Okay. Uh, next is approval of construction method for our firm, so that's Aaron and Les.
Yes, so um. The Facilities Department is recommending that the school enter into a contract with R and C management. So using a similar process that we did the last time. Um, and so uh if Les, if you could share just a little bit of context to uh to that process and the in the recommendation.
Yeah, so um we did a request for qualifications for firms that are interested in doing construction. We posted that um in the Daily Journal of Farmers, this is called, it was a, post record two weeks, as you said. Um, collected submissions from interested firms. Um, and we've renewed those and support those. Um, R and C management, which is second thing, providing support, was that one that we applied, that's the one we liked, we didn't need working with. Um, the R F Q is for the the projects that take place in the summer of twenty twenty-six. So that'll be the things that are funded with the residual from twenty twenty-three levy. Um, as well as the term uh location project baseball, which may also include the trend. Um, we need uh within the R F Q process, um a contingency in there so that we can negotiate. Um, additional years with the same company so that if um uh voters have approved the levy in February of twenty twenty-six. Um, that the same firm could provide support more this summer, so twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Um, and so we're uh interested in having uh the board authorize us any trades of the contract negotiations and we'd bring that contact back for involved the January.
Any questions?
No.
So the scope of that contract with this company would not necessarily dictate what contracts will be going out. It's just, okay.
Correct, just working with R and C.
Okay.
So a motion to move forward, let you how to phrase it.
Motion is forward.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
I.
I opposed. Motion passes.
So that's approval for the of construction management.
Yes.
R and C.
R and C, okay, yes. Um. Okay, next we have comments, comments from the Board of Directors. And. Which way do I? Along with. Number.
Dart, um, one, I really appreciate the student reps coming in and. Um, give us an update on all the things they're doing day to day, but also the time that they put into working on this A I project, right? As Aaron mentioned, we uh he and I attended a really interesting conversation on this from Quincy. Schools at the Wazza Conference, um lot of great information in there and it. Looks like it should basically be the Wazda model policy for most schools moving forward. So uh as I said in the last board meeting, I like it to move fairly quick to having something in place, so that so it's ready for the next school year. So I think that's something that we we owe it to these kids to have that ready to go. Um, and along with that, the other couple of things that are on my mind is just trying to. Figure out like, we talk a lot about K through twelve, but there's a lot that happens after twelve, right? And so it's like, how good of a job did we really do K through twelve and like, how do you get data, right? Because once everyone graduates, they feels like they're just sort of gone in the wind and maybe you see them, maybe you don't, but. I was actually also fortunate to attend several presentations at the Wazda Conference on tracking post-secondary pro- progress and growth and stuff, so uh. Something that Jim's been, I've heard him in my short time on the board, he's mentioned a bunch of this, but. It's definitely something that's on my mind that I want to keep kind of digging into. So as I get more information on that, I'll be bringing it to you guys just to kind of talk about and. You know, how are we doing out once they're out in the world? And then how can you use that to cast back, right? Like, how do do we need to modify anything as we get that new information?
Yeah, I think. I'll comment on that comment.
Oh, go for it.
Um, the uh. The emphasis on graduation rates is one thing that the school can do, but the ultimate goal is to have a. A well-educated society that builds things and and thrives. And I think that's the kind of data that tells us how we're really doing in the in the big picture, but thanks, Paul.
Been kind of piggybacking off that. I got the opportunity, was it last week?
It was.
So um last week at the high school to participate in an event where seniors come in and kind of share. What's next for them after they leave or ask questions about what might be next and you work through with them uh what they can do to get that out to the next level, whether it's applying or V A S S or. You know, talking to people in different trades. Um, and I found it just, it's really heartening to hear from some of these kids. I've had some that walked in and were just like. They got it all laid out for me to be. I don't really know where they were in the room. They did not need me. And then others that are still trying to figure it out, but they've got ideas and are just looking for that extra support and so. I think that's a really cool event that the high school puts on and there were also, again, quite a lot of community members in there. Sharing their expertise, couple of us in the H R field kind of talking about that. It's just very nice to see and see how excited this years are for what's next.
Kind of the community members were involved.
Uh, there was two different shifts. I was only at the first one and I think there was twelve of us.
That's awesome.
Time asked me to be there.
Oh, yeah.
So there were staff, yeah, there were staff uh that were uh in attendance and then probably, I would say, four or five when I was in there.
And that's something I think could be expanded. I I think I think back to my high school um career, so to speak, and having the opportunity to talk to professionals. Was very died. Motivating me to to end up to a great. Ida?
Uh, I don't have much. I have holidays, lots of concerts and music out there. Uh, missed my son's concert tonight to be here, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I'm not actually that sad about it, but uh, at any rate.
You know this is recorded, right?
I know. Anyway, um. Yeah, so there was something else I was gonna mention, but I kind of lost it. Any rate, I hope everyone has a good holiday.
Did you make it to the tree lighting?
No. Had other commitment. I ended up doing that.
You make a call.
I missed it as well, though we talked about essentially being next.
Next year.
The parade, I hear, was.
What?
Quite successful.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna mention the I X L getting rolled out. Um, I know I've been seeing it at our home, so. I'm anxious to see how that does for our students and. If if that precipitates some some benefits. That's all I had.
Great, thank you.
So I have a few comments. I wanted to thank the high school um leadership for hosting our site visit there, those of us who made it. Um, I was hoping to attend that uh student workshop, but uh. Coming back from the Thanksgiving holidays hit rain. That told Aaron this from the thirty-three miles from Wilsonville to Washougal was a solid two-hour drive. So anyway, um I'm really happy about that event. It has a lot of potential. Um, learned from our students that there is a continuing bait issue in high school when I had a plan to address it, so I'm happy about that. Um, again, point to the value of our student reps that's, you know, this is the most involved. We've had students. In informing board issues that since I've been on the board, it's been, it's been great. Um. And I talked about experiments on on the generation, social media, there's the big Australian general experiment of cutting social media. We'll see how that one works out. Um, A I is a big experiment that we're doing on our on our. Children, it's fascinating. Um, I I am concerned about the impact of A I on on developing language skills, math skills, mind. And I came across a study of college freshmen at U C San Diego, so one of my former competitors. U C system, but it's a top ten public universities in the country. Looking at freshman math skills. Only sixty-four percent of freshmen could could perform fourth at the fourth grade level. Only seventeen percent of freshmen could perform at the eighth grade level in math. And that's, that's our problem as a as a K twelve district. Universities are providing remedial services as a taxpayer. I would rather see our schools that we fund. What we provide that and not have to pay again at the university level to do remedial math and I really. I'm really freaked out about it because, you know, math, I had the experience of myself of of ninth graders, not ninth graders, not college freshmen, not being able to do simple addition or. Because, you know, math, I had the experience of myself of of ninth graders, not ninth graders, not college freshmen, not being able to do simple addition or multiplication. Without a calculator and called a phone in their hand. And sometimes you need to be able to multiply and subtract without a calculator. Um, as I said, I I really uh am am uh happy that there's a concerted effort on among citizens to be involved in in the levy passage and really. As I said, the ultimate goal should be to get our state legislator to legis- legislature to fund K-12 education in the way that. Our constitution says they should. Um, concerned about Unite funding, and I I see Battleground lost their Unite federally funded drug-free schools grant. I don't know what we have uh as as Plan B, if that federal funding disappears, but I think that's been a very effective program. Continues to be an effective program and I'm concerned about that potential loss of federal funding. Um, I want to mention uh the passing of Molly Coast, and she was kind of a mentor for me and and uh. Very supportive of schools, very supportive of everything in in Washougal and um she'll be missed. And that leads up to the last thing I want to talk about, so I spent time with my family and in uh over Thanksgiving. And I learned something learned. I knew this all along, but pretty profound that, you know, parents see their kids grow up and they grow up really fast. When you become a grandparent, you see just how fast fast can be. And uh. What used to be a one-day trip down to see people became a two-day trip. Now it takes four days because we're getting older. Um, and I think my wife and my priorities are changing um period, much as I love Washougal and committed to Washougal. Um, much as I'm grateful for public education that that served me in my my career and my life, um. It can't ever make up for what I got from my family and the values, the work ethic, kinds of things that allow someone to be successful. With or without an education, maybe more successful with a good education. Um, but that that focus on family and realizing we're missing out on these kids growing up, we did, we did get to the sixth-grade choir concert. That was a, that was a blast. Um, funner when it's your sixth-grade granddaughter rather than. Through random sixth graders, but um still fun. Um, and they actually did a a great job of honoring a a number of different um holiday delights festivals that happened this time. Christians call it Christmas, but most of the major religions have a big holiday right around this time. Um, and that was, that was kind of a neat concert. Um. So, having said that, uh, yeah, my wife and I are gonna, are planning to spend a lot more time in California. And because of that, um, I'm gonna resign effective the end of January from my position on the board and. Hope someone else from District One will step up and uh play, play the role that I've had the the privilege and honor of playing. My comment.
Okay.
Aaron.
Okay.
Well. So uh based on on that information. And knowing we have two board meetings till the time, so uh thank you for your commitment. Seven years?
Six years.
Six years.
The seventh started.
Thirty-seven, okay, so big commitment, but you've been and you've been very extremely generous with your time. And so I know we'll have some uh additional time to share uh our appreciation for you, so uh again, su- support. Your decision, understand, certainly understand why, uh but we'll we'll miss you and appreciate all your contributions. Thanks. Okay, so I have a few items I want to share. So last week we had, because of Reed Northwest, there were two concerts, one at Cape. Uh, in the morning and then one a little bit later, uh Vancouver Symphony Orchestra uh performed at both schools, and this was for all the students. So this is happens to be at CRG, uh so that's every one of our students and they played a number of songs. It was a very well-attended, they did an excellent job and our students were really appreciative, students and staff. And we also had Reed Northwest volunteers who were there, so appreciate that partnership uh with Reed Northwest. So Wakanak, which is now Drive and Drop, occurred on Saturday, and so the picture on the left, we have Interact students. And student volunteers working with Rotarians and then Xander Cook, who is our Interact and National Honor Society advisor. So we have students who are supporting our community in this initiative that this was, I think, it's been forty-plus years of Wakanak and now Drive and Drop. This is at the high school parking lot. Um, I think close to four thousand pounds was was donated. Uh, I'm involved in this, not only in my role. As a as an educator, Washougal School District, also as a Rotarian. And so through Rotary and the connection with those Rotarians, uh so I appreciate the time that was spent, probably. Uh, in total, like six, seven hours of getting ready and then participating. Ida came by and dropped up a food donation, so thank you for that. We also had a Girl Scout troops that were there. So at a at a very young age, students would, because of Girl Scouts are learning how to how to service, how to give to their community, uh how to work hard, because those bags were really heavy. And so at times we needed mul- multiple Girl Scouts to carry one bag. So I really appreciate uh this initiative and the support our student provided, our our community provided. Uh, yesterday I attended in the morning a visit uh to Cascadia Tech with a number of administrators in the in the area. And legislative representatives, so appreciate interacting with them, touring the programs at Cascadia Tech. And when you talk about college-ready and work-ready and just the decision that students make. Cascadia Tech that starts their junior year can be a two-year program. We're hosting two programs here, uh forestry and and teaching. Uh, we visited construction, diesel, mechanics, uh, uh, so a variety of programs, and so. See the need for this. They also are saying their numbers are growing. And so uh what we really want is our students to leave Washougal School District prepared for whatever future uh they're desiring, that they're ready. Whatever it is that they're ready. So I was a part of the pop uh Papa Plan as well and got to ask students after they spoke with you. Or with Mrs. Bennett or with Mr. McCroskey, I got to say, and what's your plan? What is it exactly? And it's so appreciated. Uh, all of this year, Perry Institute in Yakima, University of Washington, waiting for to hear if if I've been accepted. Uh, so uh excited for their their plans and knowing that their plans right now, that's the idea, they have a plan that may change. There's a lot of things that may change that, so uh appreciate those that were in, that were there. Uh, and then as Marley talked about, I really enjoyed this uh this morning. Uh, Mr. Castle and I drove down, met the students there. So I I imagine there were a few superintendents there. I don't know. I know there were administrators. There were uh leadership teachers. Majority of the participants were students. And it was a very inspiring morning to talk about climate and culture. And what is climate? And that's the vibe that you feel. And so what kind of vibe and feeling do we want our students to have, our staff to have? And so it was very intentional, talking about things that that we can do to increase uh the experiences, uh more positive experiences to feel connected. For our students, so very motivating, inspiring keynote, uh our students were fantastic. So very proud moment to see them interacting and game planning for this year and what they're gonna be doing as student leaders, and Marley is one of them. That and they're working on that, and so she talked a few about a few of those things. And then what came up in our uh meeting, the role meeting that was last week. One of our uh participants, when I shared that our listening tour, the last listening tour wasn't very well-attended, so it's at the high school. And she she is not, uh she does not have kids in our system. So she said, I didn't know that there was a listening tour. So I I wanted to mention it, that our next listening tour is January thirteenth. At Hathaway Elementary School from fourth thirty to six in the in the library. And so this is for anyone who wants to attend. We'll, we will be talking about the EPNO and capital levy. So we will be sharing information. So uh the wonder is, I think sometimes what's a listening tour? So that's an opportunity for community members, staff members, to interact with the board and district administration and and have two-way communication. So we will be providing a a presentation for the levy and information at this listening tour. So please share uh that this is uh coming up early in January. Okay, uh I think the last thing I have a slide is, we've been receiving quite a bit of rain recently. And I want to say thank you to our maintenance and operations team, who, when I went up to Cape, you know, this this morning to see how uh things are going. And and noticed right away the level of the river and then the different streams, then now we're turning into rivers. And just appreciate what our maintenance operations team is doing to mitigate the potential for any flooding that's that's happening. So not only upriver, but here uh behind uh our property. Uh, so there are areas that we know historically, um when we get this much precipitation that we need to um. Be working on it, so uh good job to our team uh for helping support uh that and as it continues for the next couple of days.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
The um, actually, I wanted to comment on on Jacob's uh recognition or Marley's recognition of the janitorial staff.
Yes.
I learned early on that um. If you don't appreciate the custodial staff, the clerical staff, you're not gonna get very far.
Right.
They recognize it as high school.
Yep, and that one example, and I know that uh Brooke and actually one of our custodians at River, uh Lucy shared that with me, that Brooke does a really good job of introducing her. To the students each class, so they're, they can, they know who is uh who's supporting the, keeping our our buildings clean, you know, that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, now we turn to citizen comments for general. Uh, we have, I think, five of them here, so I'm gonna read the script. There is an opportunity for citizen comment at tonight's meeting, both for proposals of action, they asked. And for general comments, the board and administrative staff like to hear comments from the public. This is our time to listen to you. Because this is a business meeting of the board of directors, the board will not respond to any public comments or questions or engage in conversation with a speaker. If follow-up action is appropriate, we will direct the superintendent to do so. Please address comments to the board as a whole, not individual members, staff or other audience members. We ask that you state your name. Please keep keep your comments to three minutes or less. You will hear a bell if you hear or when you hear a bell. We ask you to conclude your comments, remarks. Up to thirty minutes will be allocated for public comment. The board, and I say this uh and mean it, that's been the case since I've been on the board. The board appreciates, listens and cares about the broad range of perspectives in our community. We value everyone's comments. Thank you. And the first first general comment will be Ashley Crawford, follow-up comments from last meeting.
Members of the board?
Yeah.
I can save you now. I ask if you are not going to keep those, to please either give them back or shred them, because those are personal documents. All right. Uh, I'm here tonight to follow up on concerns I previously raised regarding transportation safety, record handling, retaliation in the district's response to ongoing issues affecting my son Hudson. First, I want to address transportation. Before Hudson even started kindergarten, in early two thousand twenty-four, I attended my very first Zoom meeting with Connor and the Director of Transportation, David Sell. I entered that meeting with legitimate legitimate safety concerns, Hudson's history of elopement, my handicapped mother needing to chase him down the street in some mornings, and the danger he was faced during camp. Temper tantrums in the middle of the road. These were clear safety issues, not complaints. Yet I recently discovered an old email that from the same director claiming all I do is complain. This was written after the very first meeting, before my son had even begun school, and it it is damaging precedent for how my concerns would be interpreted moving forward. No parent should feel that their safety concerns minimize or misdelectable, especially at their very first interaction with district staff. Second, I met with the superintendent who informed me and my attorney last week that an internal investigation was underway and asked me to recreate a timeline. I wouldn't clarify that I have already paid for district records through a public records request. I'm willing to explain the timeline, but I should not be asked to recreate documentation the district holds itself. Additionally, due to personal relationships with and prior comments made to me such as, you're going to do whatever you want to do. I have concerns about neutrality neutrality. I respectfully request that the board reconsider the oversight of an external. Or an external reviewer to ensure fairness. This is exactly why families don't come forward to board meetings, retaliation. You can clearly see this as a problem, as the board meeting regarding these topics last week has a hundred and seventy-seven views compared to the normal twenty to thirty that that speaks volumes in itself. Third, I need to address retaliation. This fear is not theoretical. It comes from past experience. After advocating strongly for Hudson, Connor transferred my child out of Cape and into C H E without consulting his IEP team and without legal work. Doing the legal requirements for placement decisions. I explained my reasons for objecting, yet I was told that the decision had already been made and that there was nothing I could do. This game, or uh, after a heated IEP meeting. During litigation, I canceled an IEP meeting for legal reasons. Despite my cancellation, the meeting was held anyways. I now fear that the district deleted or altered records reflecting my cancellation. These concerns are backed by documentation inconsistencies and should be investigated. At the request to cancel, meaning can no longer be found in anybody's emails. Why I, while I am not accusing anyone directly, these inconsistencies raise serious concern about record integrity. And I am asking that the board ensure immediate preservation of all related communications. I'm grown, I have growing concerns about a sudden dramatic drop in communications from members of Hudson's IEP team. We went from communicating multiple times a day to almost no contact at all. Um, it, you guys are, I've done some research, you guys can do a motion to allow me to finish reading and it can be passed or all my kids are here to finish reading. It's um, there is laws regarding that. So does anybody motion to let me finish? I've only got a couple more paragraphs.
I motion to let you finish initially.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
You vote on it?
Uh, yes, you have to vote on it, sorry.
I'll second, oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Question, clarification, will that eliminate some of these other comments then, if you finish yours?
You don't want to speak. Do you have a speech prepared? To, Cadence kindly remove them.
Okay.
Are you speaking? Uh, Kelly and J- Jalen?
Thank you.
Okay. Um, sorry, let me figure out where was that. Okay. I have growing concerns about the sudden and dramatic drop in communication from members of that key team. We went from communicating multiple times a day, that can be backed by a record request, um. To almost no contact at all. In some cases, emails are not being answered whatsoever. This does not feel coincidental. I fear staff may have been instructed verbally to avoid electronic communication in order to prevent records from being created. While I cannot speak mode, I cannot speak to motives, the drastic change in communication patterns is deeply concerning and absolutely something that should be reviewed. The Director of Special Education remains in his in his role during this investigation. Given the nature of the concerns and the potential impact of evidence, I believe the board should evaluate whether it's appropriate to maintain the integrity of an investigative process. No remorse, no accountability is taken, rather gloating, almost like a game was won against my six-year-olds. Additionally, I want to raise broader concerns about the financial impact on the community. The district, the district is currently asking families to support the upcoming levies, levies that are critical for maintaining programs, staffing and essential services. Yet when the district allows behavior that leads to legal disputes, investigations and potential procedural violations, it creates unnecessary financial strain on the entire system. Many families in this community are already choosing between gas and groceries, yet they should not be asked to shoulder the financial consequences of preventable issues. Causing an employee whose conduct goes unaddressed. Fiscal responsibility includes ensuring that staff actions do not expose the district to avoid to avoidable legal and administrative costs. Let me be very clear. If the Director of Special Education is allowed to continue with access to alter or otherwise interfere with these records or engage with any other form of unprofessional conduct. Related to them, I will have, I will immediately pursue every legal remedy available without further notice. This could cause the district to potentially lose federal and state funding, and I do not want this, and I doubt the district wants that as well. But I have to do what is right for my child, and this is not right. In summary, this situation began even before my son started school. My very first meeting resulted in safety concerns being labeled as complaints, retaliatory actions followed, then I advocated when I advocated for him. My very first meeting resulted in safety concerns being labeled as complaints, retaliatory actions followed, then I advocated for him. Records appearing inconsistent, communication has abruptly diminished, internal oversight feels compromised. And the broader financial impact of families cannot be ignored. These issues are not isolated. They reflect, reflect systematic patterns that directly affect families, students and community trust.
No cadence, no Kylie, Jay, take Calvin.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Jacob? Thank you.
All right, let me know whenever you're ready.
Go.
Hello, my name is Jacob Crawford and I'm a former graduate of Washougal High School and Cascadia Tech. I'm Hudson's older brother. I want to speak because my family has been living through this situation. At Watch House, it affected my little brother and my mom. Hudson is not just a student in the district, he's my baby brother. I see the stress, fear and confusion he experiences. When routines aren't followed. He doesn't feel safe. I also see how my mom's hard work every single day to make sure he's protected and supported. When the school dismisses her concerns and retaliate against her, it affects our whole household. I personally had a five oh four plan in high school. If my five oh four plan was disregarded like his was, I personally would not have graduated. I've seen my mom spend hours documenting this issues and recording records and trying to communicate with the district. I've watched her break down because she feels ignored or pushed aside. No parent should be treated that way when they're trying to make their child get the help they need. I feel like Washougal is very based to their students. We even have messages like up there. Our vision together and trusted with and accountable for the success of each student. I really feel like we should be doing everything in our power to be true to what we're saying we're doing. Thank you.
And finally, Kelly.
Thank you. I'm Kelly Gutman, Hudson's grandmother. And I want to share my perspective, just because I've witnessed firsthand the challenges Hudson has faced. Especially regarding transportation and safety. Um I routinely watched Hudson last year, so I was part of his everyday school life. Um and also I just want to say that we're not here because of a specific concern that's just happened. We're here because of concerns that have been ongoing since Hudson started his education. And the fights we've had to do in order to get him taken care of. There were many mornings when I was, when I was the one walking Hudson to the bus stop. Now I'm handicapped, but I don't expect the district to make any um, any um. Can't think of the word, but to, to make any concessions to, to my handicap. It's more about Hudson. And the behaviors he's done with me, I've seen him do with his sisters and I've seen him do with his mom. Hudson is part of his autism, is he is routine-based? If his routine gets messed up, it can cause him problems. Hudson is an eloper, which if you don't know what an eloper is, or you, if you have not experienced an eloper in your care. It's a child who suddenly can take off at ninety miles an hour down the street. And catching them is very hard. Um so with, with the bus stop, that routine, if. If he's expecting, and not only routine, but what Hudson is expecting to happen. So if he's expecting to somebody to be there and they're not there, that throws him off and he can have a total meltdown. If um. Yeah, so let me go back. So um. Frequently that would result in me having to chase him down the street or his sisters having to chase him down the street or even his mom at times. I can't keep up with him when he runs down the street, but that's kind of my issue, right? Not Hudson's. Um there were times when he would have full meltdowns in the middle of the street and he would have to be dragged across the street. So what we had to battle to get his IEP changed, so instead of Hudson being picked up and dropped, dropped off across the street and one house over. With another child that met there at the school bus, that Hudson, the school bus was supposed to stop in front of Ashley's house. With the door facing her house, so he could safely get out and it was easier to get him inside. Um routinely, over several months, anytime there was a substitute driver. Not anytime, I won't generalize, but many substitute drivers would drop off across the street. They would not drop off in front of the house and they would say they didn't know that they were supposed to do that. They would, we saw one time where they didn't put the crossing arm out when they were dropping him off. Um we had times where they couldn't take him out of the seat. I think that took a lot longer than I thought it would, but thank you.
Oh, they said you could. Okay.
Oh, I can, okay. It's only one page and I'm halfway through. I know. Um. It's been heart, let's see. It's been heart, heartbreaking to watch my daughter fight constantly, just to make sure Hudson receives the basic protections he is entitled to. The retaliation she experienced after advocating for him has affected our whole family. We are exhausted. Taking care of a special needs child is exhausting in itself. Fighting to get him taken care of is double exhausting. The, the retaliation we saw with the threat of the change of the school district. Or, or the school, that happened within a week of us being in a meeting and talking about how great we felt at Cape Horn, how comfortable Hudson was. How we researched, how we talked to the teachers. And then a week later, without any transition plan, we were told starting Monday, he would be at a different school. And transportation then contacted and said his, his bus schedule has been changed to go to the other school. All email, no back and forth with Ashley, just this has been done, all within a week. That has to be retaliation. I am asking more to ensure that what has happened to Hudson and to us as a family is taken seriously. The district has a responsibility to protect students, to honor parents' voices and to act with integrity. We are simply acting for safety, fairness and accountability. Thank you.
That's it for citizen comments, unless you guys want us to speak to or, okay. Do we have any future agenda items? Thanks, Seth. Seven forty-seven.
Thank you.